Good afternoon. Notice is hereby given that the City of Lamarc, City Council, will conduct a special meeting on December 9, 2024, beginning at 4:00 PM in Council chambers at 1109 B Bayou Road, Lamarc, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with Section 551.127B of the Texas Local Government Code, the Presiding Officer, in accordance with the Lamarc City Council intended to be in, will physically be present at 1109 B Bayou Road, Lamarc, Texas. This location will be open to the public. Council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Here, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A?
Present.
Councilmember District B?
Present.
Councilmember District C is not with us at this time. Councilmember District D?
Present.
And Mayor.
Present, thank you. Before we move into executive session, this is a special agenda, and it will outline an evaluation of our city attorney as well as our city clerk. And so because of that, I will open for public comments to any person online or in our presence for any comments as it relates to these two agenda items. Vinnie, is it Vinnie or Vincent? Vinnie, your mother named you Vinnie? Okay, well, there it is. All right, Vincent, are there any persons online wishing to speak? There are no persons online wishing to speak? Or any persons before us physically present wishing to speak? You may be recognized. Very good. Let's now move to item three, executive session. The City Council for the City of Lamarc, Texas, reserves the right to adjourn to executive session at any time during this meeting to discuss any matters listed above. That's authorized by Texas Government Code 551... Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. 551.072, deliberations about real property. 551.073, deliberations about gifts and donations. 551.074, personnel matters. 551.076, deliberations about security devices. And 551.087, economic development. Today, we will be in executive session for item 3.1, Section 551.074, personnel matter to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, the city attorney. And 3.2, Section 551.074, personnel matter to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, the city clerk. Ms. Nance?
Yes, sir.
The time is?
4:09.
We are recessing from our special meeting at 4:09, and we will move into our executive session at 4:09.
Good evening. And welcome. You all just happened to catch us in the middle of another meeting. So before we get to our regular meeting, uh, we are, uh, moving back into our special meeting from our executive session from the evaluation of our city attorney and our city clerk. We're doing that at?
Six ten.
Ma'am?
Six ten.
Six ten. Item four, actions to be taken from executive session. Uh, four, one, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, four personnel matter to deliberate their appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, the city attorney. I will entertain a motion.
A motion to put out for bids for a new city attorney, I believe is what we discussed back there, or the new council for city attorney.
Uh, just, uh,
Good.
Just, um, purpose of clarification, you're saying that your, your motion is you'd like to put out an RFP for, uh, a news, uh, to see what legal services are, are available out there.
Correct.
Not necessarily.
Right.
It's just, it, it, including Mills surely, if they wish to respond to the RFP. Would that be accurate to say?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to.
Yeah, you read it back, please.
Uh, I would need assistance.
Let's do it. Sounds like the motion is, uh, for us as a council, uh, to act by, uh, finish Joe.
Uh, it.
Wait, it was Ross's.
I know, but Joe's gonna clean that up for us.
To, um, the council, um, let an RFP, uh, for legal services for the city of Lamarck, which is what that.
That get it?
Yes.
Mr. Ross? Did you get that, Ms. Nance?
I did.
I will entertain a second.
Second.
Any discussion? I believe the idea that Mayor Proton was trying to get us to understand is that this does not preclude or exclude, uh, Mills Shirley from, um, from submitting a request with a proposal. Uh, is that right?
You're correct, and it does not all, it does not, um, uh, terminate our relationship with Mills Shirley at this time as well. Right, Gus continues as our, Mills, Mills Shirley continues as our city council.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For two, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, four personnel matter. Go ahead, Joe.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Uh, did we have a roll call?
No.
No, at the beginning you did.
At the special meeting. Uh, oh, we're still in the, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, not the new meeting. My apologies, Mayor. It's, uh.
Been a long day, huh?
Dimension.
Joe, since you've joined us back in the special meeting, we'll, we'll go item four, too. Section four, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, four personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee city clerk. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The, um, for purposes of, of the evaluation of the city clerk, uh, I for one, and it was, I mean, it's up to council to speak as well. I'm still aware of concerns that, uh, we have with regard to, uh, certain posting issues, timely posting, uh, uh, dates, keeping up with, um, information from our boards and commissions. And, um, this is an area that we continue to look for improvement from the, from the city clerk. And, um, and that's just my comment is that we continue to look for improvements from the city clerk and that, um, uh, that I for one, uh, favor continuing her employment situation.
So the motion is that you, were you making a motion or were you just making a comment?
I'm, I'm making the comment. I'll, I'll put, I'm just a comment.
I will entertain a motion on action, uh, towards the city clerk's office. Or, or shall we make more comments?
No, I'm good.
My, my comment would be the same. We've listened to and watched the, I don't want to call it carelessness, but just the, the timeliness of making those posts and required posts. Just wanted to make people that have brought that to my attention know that we have let our city clerk know about it.
Let the record reflect, Mayor, that her, uh, overall evaluation was a seven point seven. And, um, those, uh, improvements that we've talked about over the years have been made. She's been, uh, given the tools necessary to do a better job. I think we're talking about a situation that happened one time, I guess in the last eight months. But I want to go ahead and put on the record, uh, her overall score and make the motion to continue our employment with our, uh, city clerk. That's on the floor.
Very good, there is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, is there any discussion? Kair, I would have to say that, um, there are still issues, right? Uh, we've talked about them in the back. I'd like to see, um, you personally, uh, look into, uh, supervisors training. You have a staff now, uh, and, and I want to make sure that, that you're able to adequately supervise those staff members. Your department is growing. There have been issues with redaction. Uh, there have been issues with, uh, other boards and commissions, uh, and their agendas, their supporting documents, um, the minutes to their meetings, uh, as well as issues, continued issues with the postings of agendas and the postings of, uh, information required by law to the newspaper. And so while, while certainly we are entertaining, uh, moving forward with you, I'd like to see in the next six months, you complete that supervisory training. I'd like to see a plan from you, uh, that, uh, will guard against, and, and this is not in six months, I'd like to see this, uh, by next meeting, a plan that will guard against the failure to post, uh, or post appropriately or accurately. I'd like to see a plan, uh, that will help us to understand what the process is for the city clerk's office, uh, to support all of our boards and our commissions on their agendas, their supporting documentations for those agendas, uh, as well as an accurate recording of the meetings. Those are three things. Did you get those three?
Yes, sir.
Council, do we object to any of those three things? Any further comments, questions? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five adjournment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. There you go. Go. City of Lamarck City Council regular agenda of December ninth, twenty twenty four. Notice to hereby give that the city council of the city of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on December ninth, twenty twenty four, beginning at six P M. in council chambers at eleven oh nine B by U Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with section five, five, one, uh, dot one, two, seven, B of the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer in the form of the Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present at eleven oh nine B by U Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public, the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Kair, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, Councilman, District A.
Present.
Councilman, District B.
Present.
Councilman, District C is not with us at the moment. Councilman, District D.
Present.
And Mayor.
Present, thank you. At this time, I thought I saw Pastor Scott. Pastor Scott, the Bible says that you need to be instant in season and out of season. So at this time, I invite you, uh, Pastor Scott of the, of Lamarck's own Family Unity Baptist Church to the podium, if you would lead us in our invocation, uh, certainly we would like to ask, uh, Mayor Proton to lead us in our pledge. Let's stand if you're ready.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, Father of Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, Father, we come this evening with Thanksgiving in our hearts as many of us celebrate Advent season. That anticipation, the arrival, King of King and Lord of Lord. Father, we come this evening thanking you for all your many blessings. Thank you for this council, and thank you for the people we serve. Father, I come praying this evening for unity. I know the world that we live in, there's, there's such a disunity. And, and, and I recall our Lord praying for unity. Without unity, a house would not stand. Without unity, a city would not stand. Father, I pray for unity within our council, within our city, within our community, within our churches. For where there is unity, there's hope. There's love. There's grace. So I pray in this room tonight for the spirit of unity that we think more of others than we do of ourselves. Father, we love and thank you. Bless this time together. Give us our sins in Jesus' name. My delight is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with infinite justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, thank you Pastor Scott.
Now, we have two proclamations. First of which will go to Mr. David. Is it Jimenez?
Jimenez.
Jimenez? Hey, Dave. Come on, Dave. Mom, Dave, y'all wanna join? We have a hero in our midst. Come on. Can you see he's wearing the fire department's up? Patch. Did you know I was a firefighter when I? I'm a boy, y'all. Great young man, let's hear about Mr. David Jimenez. Officer of Mayor for the City of Lamarck proclamation. Whereas we are here to recognize the bravery and heroic efforts of David Jimenez. Whereas David, a sixth grade student, took immediate action when he noticed the neighbor's trash can on fire by alerting his neighbors of danger, calling nine one one for assistance and taking it upon himself to find a hole to stop the fire from spreading until emergency services arrive. And for a David's example of good judgment and courage in an emergency situation, especially at such a young age, is truly commendable. And whereas his courage to help his neighbor and his immediate response, his immediate response action saved a potential disaster from arising during the Thanksgiving holiday, and whereas Lamarck Fire Department, the city council and the community are truly proud of his willingness to look out for others, and now being resolved that the community of Lamarck celebrates this true act of bravery from David Jimenez. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council, by virtue of the authority vested by the city of Lamarck, Texas, do hereby proclaim November twenty third is David Jimenez Day. Let's give David a. For this last part, so I think that we should invite Caesar Garcia and also David Merrick. Five G pieces. Here, baby. Absolutely, whoever we want. Very good.
Very good.
In the city of Lamarck, David, and we do hereby urge everyone in the community to commend and celebrate the courage of David Jimenez. So at this time, David, we want to celebrate you because you are the example for which all of us to live by. From the oldest to the youngest, right? All across our great city, if we all do the things that you've done for our community, our community will be one hundred percent better.
Amen.
We're gonna ask Chief Merrick to represent the fire department, and then we're gonna ask Mr. Garcia to represent the city staff. Chief, do you have any comments you'd like to make to this brilliant young man?
You know, it's, it's the bravery that you see in, in these young folks, and this is, it's a good thing because we do it every day, day in and day out, because it's what we love to do, and it's just nice to see that, that this young man took it upon himself to protect his neighbors. And, uh, I mean, we've got a good feeling. Garcia. Great job, especially to your parents, your community, all your relatives. Well done, and I want to have the chiefs that look forward to having you with me very soon.
David, if you have anything you'd like to share with us?
It wasn't all mine, my mom helped a lot, Bill. Helped a lot.
My, my mom tended.
He stayed calm recently. Thank you all very much.
All right, David, let's do this. Hold your, hold your proclamation. Mrs. Dyer, don't get your picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You very much.
Thank you.
David, you are a wonderful young man, and, and, and I appreciate you for that, but I know, David, I know that there is another person with us present today who probably appreciates this more than I because she spent her entire life educating young people like you and twenty one year old like me. And that is, I just don't know why, that is Mrs. Diane Merchant. I'm going to read off of this, off the proclamation. This merchant is a dynamo. He is a power hog. He is a powerhouse.
Yes.
He is a perfect storm of education. And she arrived in our community at a time that that was desperately needed. Not only did she dedicate her life to educating the young people of our great community, but she founded an entire school. And after that, after she went and 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 parted from that school, she continued to give back year after year to the children of our community and still found time to make sure that the children of our community, even after they become educated, that they keep in touch, that they stay on the straight now, and that they continue to be the productive members of society that she taught them to be. So Ms. Merchant, we're gonna give you your flowers. I know the four nine awards gave you your flowers. Certainly, we here in the City of Lamarck appreciate you. The school that you founded is still in the City of Lamarck.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the way you teach and celebrate, Ms. Paul, it's been twenty five years. This summer, we were we were out at the uh at the academy. So so from the office of the mayor and the rest of our city council, for the City of Lamarck proclamation, whereas we are here to honor and to celebrate the accomplishments of a local educator, Diane Merchant. Whereas Ms. Merchant embodies the true spirit of preserving academic excellence in Galveston County and seeks to ensure that every child in the area receives a quality and outstanding education. Whereas her commitment to educating the local youth has spanned over forty two years, and her passion for teaching and empowering youth within the community throughout education has not gone unnoticed. And whereas Ms. Merchant and her team of educators have not only founded Mainland Perpetuary Academy, which serves from kindergarten through the eighth grade, but she has also proven her strong connections and the power of education and helped her students complete their education in the top half of their graduating high school programs through high expectations, rigor in the curriculum, and a strong sense of community pride. Now being resolved that the community of Lamarck celebrates the commitment to education and love that Ms. Merchant continues to provide within our community. Now therefore, we the mayor and City Council by virtue of the authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, do hereby proclaim December twentieth, two thousand and twenty four, as Diane Merchant Day in the City of Lamarck, and do hereby urge everyone in the community to commend and celebrate the achievements of Ms. Merchant. And testament to where I've witnessed my hand seal of the City of Lamarck this twenty seventh day of November, two thousand and twenty four. Keith Bell, Mayor. Let's give Ms. Merchant. We're gonna ask Ms. Merchant to give us some remarks and certainly moments of occasions.
What actually began twenty seven years ago in Galveston, Texas was a dream. As an educator, so I've missed and talked that, it cannot have a stop. But it was not a labor of love. It was not done without assistance, camaraderie. My co-founders here have raised.
Yes.
Opportunity to thank Lamarck's Texas for welcoming us as they did twenty five years ago. We've come a long way, baby. But we've got a long way to go. That our children need each and every one of us to stand tall and to stand for something. And I beg you to please don't forget about the children. They are our future, and they are our most precious natural resource. We can't give up one of them. They need you. Thank you for this proclamation of of December twentieth, the Diane Merchant Day. Anyone else that will allow me to go into the stores and get anything? Then the young man.
That's right.
Because you are our future. And the courage and bravery that you represented on that day, something not to be taken like in this day and time. So thank you.
Well.
And we have to keep it to grow and give back to the community. Thank each and every one of you.
Yeah. Okay. So you want me to go back? Well, I think we have one more presentation.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment, invite Chief up here, and we have a special guest to also invite to the front. It's with great privilege and honor that we have Detective La Croix join us. Mayor, you know how much we've put into our Safe City Initiative, following the guide and the auspice of becoming safe. We wanted to make sure that we followed community oriented policing, and we wanted to make sure that we had the best representation of that possible for all those that are out there. We want to take a moment and recognize Detective La Croix because not only is he the community oriented policing officer that we all love here in Lamarck, not only has he made significant progress in in bringing those to justice, but so much so that he's been recognized as a community oriented police officer of the year by by the Department of Justice, and we're here for the nation. And we would like to sit here and acknowledge that award tonight and recognize his efforts. And Mayor, a testament to you and the auspices that you had to take us on the Safe City Initiative for the entire police department who has followed through, want to make sure that Detective La Croix, he is recognized. A lot of us called him different things. He is actually renowned as many have called him Lifetime La Croix. He's even gotten TV appearances. But he is, I I was told to say that. They they made you say it. Sorry. You know who exactly. But Mayor, if we can please recognize him and ask him to say a few words.
Community oriented policing works. And the only reason I know that is because years ago, was it twenty oh nine? Our years of running together, we needed a police team. And and then City Manager Eric Gage found this young scribe who could snap. He found me how important it was for our police officers to know their community. And Detective La Croix is an offspring of the vision from Dear Chief Argon. So Chief, this is not my 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 philosophy. This is philosophy that you've adopted and you brought here to us. So if you'd like to say a few words on the idea of community oriented policing and this fabulous young man that supports.
We don't get any of that. Do not remind me started it. I want to say this, Stephen, uh, this award, uh, the seventh annual Attorney General's Award for Distinctive Service in the Union of Nations was a national award. Attorney General Merrick Garland put this around his neck. And what is for mayor to this? This award looks like a necklace.
That's all right.
Over almost three hundred officer applied to the those hundred fifty thousand, three thousand, one fifty, fifty to a hundred and ninety. But Stephen was frozen on his three hundred. As Caesar mentioned, he not only does community policing with often partnership with his community, he has solved some of the biggest major crimes we've had in Lamarck.
I just turned over.
I should have been taller.
Well, the parents flew in back to D C today, so they didn't leave the eleven. But I'm grateful for the honor. Uh, I know that it's a community citizen award. I didn't do community citizen, but I have had help because I am the detective. I've had help from our patrol officers that, you know, for people that were needing to follow through on things that I'm asking you using me, that they're asking from you to, you know, survive for them. So I can't thank them enough because they're a part of it. And also my investigation, the amount of dedication I had to work, that doesn't have our patrol officers. They were starting the process, making sure they're doing their job so that we can, you know, follow up on the back. And so I I do owe this award to them and all the people that helped me throughout this process, my partner, E C I D, and I'm just grateful and happy that, you know, I I do owe this back to you, Lamar.
Amen. Okay. We have a another presentation from the concerning the Lamarck Civic Academy. Ms. Garcia, would that be you or would that be Mr. Richard?
Um, we've got J B and actually our our intern. Uh, we have our intern joining us, Mr. Julian. Please come forward. I'm sorry. I missed a chair there. I apologize. We can get one more chair. Um, we've had the privilege of having Mr. Julian, who was an intern with the University of Houston.
Welcome, Julian.
He is. His assignment was, as you remember, we had an intern before, uh, won the John Parr Award when we went to All American Cities. Another successful internship program that we have. At the end of Miss Miss McKenzie's program, she brought you the Youth Council Program. Mr. Julian's program for his internship has been to bring you forward what we started calling our Civic Academy. As you know, we just had our first doorstep democracy. You asked us to follow up on this project. Mr. Julian's ticket taken in by the reins under J B's tutelage, and I'll let them present here. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Julian. Uh, I'm a student from the University of Houston, and I have the privilege to intern here at the City of Mark. Um, so basically Civic Academy is around a six to nine week course or program that allows the citizens of Lamarck to learn more about each local department and how they operate in their city. And the goal of it is to just give people an insight of how local government works and a better understanding of their community. Um, so the course would cover each public department and how they function and along with why they're important. And so the other thing is to understand the relationship between the public. And so the outline of the academy would be, there's going to be an intro. Okay, keep going. Sorry. Uh, sorry. There's a, the outline of the academy, um, the program that will go the introducing a certain public department, like the Police Department or Public Works Department. And then there will be a sixty second video of someone over the department explaining how it operates. And then after that, there's going to be an in-depth PowerPoint about the role of the department, how it impacts the community, ways that the community can be involved. And then later it's going to be like some trivia, trivia questions to help people memorize about ways that the um, with the with the the role of the public department. And then after the program, there's going to be some feedback from the citizens about how, what they learned from the program, things that could be better. And outside of that, the, again, the overall goal is to just help these citizens of Lamarck have a better understanding of their local government. Local government is something that impacts a lot of people's lives more than the federal government does. And I think it's very helpful if people know how everything worked. And I think it's just a a better understanding of local government would also build more trust between the pub public and the government. So that's. Yes.
I told Julian I wouldn't leave him up here by himself. So Vinnie, if you'll go to the next one. I I would, it it would, I would be remorse if I did not, um, really not take the time to express Julian's, Jul- Julian's pursuit of of this project. I, well, it was a secret until now, but Julian got high marks for being here and being a part of this entire process. Uh, whereas he is studying political science at the University of Houston, I'm thrilled and hope that he will have an illustrious political career ahead of him. And really, what this boils down to is a combination of something that Lamarck was already kind of dreaming and brainstorming about, as well as Julian really coming in, hitting the ground running to to really bring democracy to your doorstep. And so really, one of the great things that that he really did was to to understand, understand the city, understand the the gaps in municipal government, and perhaps that, you know, maybe it's been a year or two since we sat in that government one O one class, or it has been, um, things have changed in our government. And so really, Julian spent, how long were you here? Twelve? Three months. Yeah. I was gonna say twelve weeks, but three, he was here for three months. Um, and and really, this was his his only focus while he was here. And it was so that we can continue to tell our story and to tell our story well, so that we know, um, because if you ask, well, I need, do I need a permit for that? Well, we'll be able to explain that, and we'll be able to educate uh, in in really a new and modern way of of the process of that. Uh, what the Fire Department covers and what the Police Department covers, what uh, city administration does, um, and and so on and so forth. And I think he wrote this entire thing uh, by himself, and I really just served as the bumpers so that he didn't fall into the gutter. Uh, but I think that he did a fantastic job to to write all of this so that we can roll it out as time marches on. So we can explain really the, our form of government as manager or council manager form of government, what our city council does, what our administration does, and what each and every aspect of our city does for the general public. And so, um, on top of just this very quick presentation to to really talk about Civic Academy, he wrote an entire curriculum that is pages on pages on pages that we did not, obviously for the sake of time, include in this presentation, but, um, not only his his instructors, uh, but myself and all of those on city staff that interacted with this. Kudos to Julian for his hard work and determination to make democracy an everyday thing. That's where we cheer y'all.
Let's give Julian a round of applause.
Obviously, we're entertaining any questions, um, from council. But but really, what what this is, is is part of part of Julian's internship and part of his entire project. Uh, this being his cast zone project right before his graduation. Uh, I think he did a fantastic job, and I think Lamarck is better for having a bright young man like himself here.
Absolutely, absolutely. Counsel, do we have any questions for Julian?
I don't have any questions. I think it's it's, I think it's awesome that that you're doing this because so many times in high school, we're so star tested. You don't get the time to really learn about the importance of our democracy and how and why we should protect it. So kudos to you for even wanting to do that, to educate us more, because we need to hear this over and over again so we don't take our precious gift of democracy for granted. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any others?
I just want to congratulate you on coming upon your graduation. My daughter will be doing that next next year or so, and she's getting ready for her internship in one of those three letter least academy type deals next January. Uh, I love the idea. I hope we actually get it posted to the website because I would like to take the test or play the trivia question stuff. So congratulations. Good job.
Any others? I think I think Julian, it's important, the the work that you've done is important, um, in this country. The way that we we gather information as a country has changed, and there are all sorts of sources. Um, the the problem with that is is when you're when you live in different cities, different states, the rules change. Uh, what is true in Lamarck is not true in Texas City. This is a council manager form of government. Whereas Texas City is a strong mayor form of government. Their mayor has exponentially more power. We govern as a team. People that live between the two may not understand the difference, and they may get confused along with getting our our news from different sources. Some of those sources are accurate, and some of those sources sources are inaccurate. I think this cuts through the noise and drills down to the heart of municipal government so that our community members might know the answers to the questions that they pose to us every day. Some think that we have more power. Some think that the system. Uh, some think that we have more power. Some think that the system works in ways that it does not. This is an effort uh, to educate, to inform and therefore empower our community members. And you are at the center of that, sir. That can't be taken away from you. Uh, certainly this will be something that will carry you, uh, through, uh, your graduation and beyond. It will be something that will benefit our community members. Question, question. Uh, will this program come with a, uh, when it's completed, will there be some sort of a certification process?
Yes, there, there will be.
And, 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 did you want to answer?
Um, I said yes.
Yes, yes. Okay. And, and then from this certification process, will there be an association process thereby, uh, perpetuating a fellowship, right? We want these people to graduate and then we want them to associate and fellowship with one another. Uh, because from that, we want them to become ambassadors, yes? So that their neighbors would know the difference between, um, sales tax and property tax. Right? Is all of those things part of your plan?
Yes, sir.
Well, why didn't you tell us that, Julian? Goodness. I'm teasing. We just wanted to get that on record, Julian, because many of our, our community members uh, need to know more about this Civic Academy and I just helped you explain that to them. So the first of the year, we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to participate and learn about their government. You are an extraordinary young man with a bright future. I wish that I were you. Uh, your future is so bright. Let's give Julian a round of applause.
Mayor.
Very good. I think we're done with.
Just to let you know, uh, Julian is now obviously, uh, finishing the program, but we've already been approached by the University of Houston about a other internship for next year. So, um, that's creating those pipelines that we talked about to make sure that we can keep having more U of H, uh, public, uh, graduates to cover our program.
Very good. Good work. Good work. Item five, AARP bike audit. Who would that be?
That is Ms. Tanya. As we queue up the, uh, presentation.
Hello, Ms. Tanya. Good to see you again. Name and address for the record. I'm just teasing.
If, if, if you remember, uh, Mayor, uh, we started this program, we received a, uh, grant from AARP to do, we, we applied to do a white, a walking audit and a bike audit throughout our city to find out some information. We were not successful with the walk audit grant, even though that they were able to give us information, but we were successful in obtaining these bike audit grants. And, uh, through the Parks Board, Ms. Tanya led that initiative and she's got some information here to uh, share with everybody. Ms. Tanya?
Thank you. Um, um, this bike audit was the com- comprehensive evaluation of our city's biking infrastructure. Uh, we had at least three volunteers, um, on site helping us with this audit. Um, if you would go to the next slide for me, please. We conducted an order, I mean, an audit within the corridor doors of the Gulf Freeway, Cedar Road, Highway seventeen sixty-five, Highway three and Main Street. Those red dots you see are the red lights that are posted on the outer skirts of the corridors, the two black. Um, dots are the lights that are located within the city. And if I remember correctly Caesar, those are the ones that the city is responsible. I don't remember what you said.
The, the two blue are the ones that we are responsible for on Bayou, uh, in Cedar and then Cedar Lake.
Okay, thank you. Um, those two lights are the only two that are not working. Um, all of them have mechanical mechanism that have the pedestrian and an indicating to pedestrians when to cross. None of those lights are working there. Um, the one that, that lake, I mean, that Bayou and Cedar, um, has been updated. And I mean the poles and some of the, uh, uh, the equipment there, but for the most part, the mechanical mechanisms that are supposed to be working at those locations don't work. The Lake Road, um, intersection is the worst of all of the intersections. Um, and I don't understand why, but I, I just wanted to make note of that. Can you go to the next slide for me, please?
Question, Ms. Tanya.
Ms. Tanya.
Would you say the, that the light works, but we're talking about, for clarity, the
The pedestrian.
The pedestrian crosswalk, uh, that we see in other cities, right?
Okay. Um, these are the audit locations that we, um, took a look at. Um, they are mainly Bayou Road, Lake Road, Boche, Cedar Drive and Newman Road. Um, we audited all of those locations. And the tenth item, we looked at off path and trails which were our bike, I mean, our, uh, city parks. Okay, we can move to the next slide, please. Um, our street and road assessments, um, found these is, these issues were constant in all of the locations. You have trash bins, debris covering sidewalks and roadways. Um, you got trees overgrown, either over onto the sidewalks or, uh, encroaching or impeding pathways. You can see parked cars on the street. Um, we had, um, Steven. He was one of our, um, volunteers who rode his bike through all of these locations. And if you look at the two pictures on the bottom, those are cars that are actually going around him. Do you, and you can see how close they are. And, um, the, the pedestrians weren't very fri- friendly. You can hear them actually blowing horns on the videos. So these were just some of the issues that we saw that was, uh, relevant in all of the locations. You can go to the next slide, please. On Bayou Road, one and two, we broke them up in sections by, um, the lights. And so if we are familiar with Bayou Road, um, there is a sidewalk on Bayou Road. We even have bikes painted on the street, but those are not, um, are legitimate or official bike paths. Um, and we recommend that Bayou Road be one of the, um, facilities that we look at since we already have. Um, we, we started the process, we just didn't finish it. Um, we can switch to the next slide, please. Lake Road, um, Lake Roads one and two, if we look at seventeen sixty-five to Cedar Drive, there is a sidewalk on Lake Road on the right-hand side. It's a smaller salt sidewalk. Two people can't walk side by side on it because it's so small. It does need some work. Um, we rated this location, um, as a good location. But the only problem with that is on Lake Road, one, they have those utility poles between the sidewalk and the street. So if we even considered doing a bike lane, there would be some work to the roadways. Um, Lake Road two is a busy, um, section. That is the section across Cedar. We noticed a lot of people walking and riding bikes on that section. That is not a safe stretch of road for anybody to be walking on or biking on. Um, because it is busy and you see people walking and in the grass a lot. Go to the next slide, please. Cedar Drive is from Highway three to Boche. We are recommending that stretch of, um, roadway be included as a bike path because it has four lanes, two sidewalks on both sides of the road until you get to, um, I believe it is Lake Road. So we have two sidewalks on Cedar Drive and four lane highways. And that area is, is prime for, um, a bike lane if that's what we wanted to put there. If you get to Cedar Drive three, which is from Lake Road to, uh, Boche, the walk paths for those people is just as worse as Lake Road two. Um, you have, um, what do you call parking stops on the right stop side? But again, that is a small sidewalk. Two people can't pass. And I watched that intersection for a while and people would either ride in the street, depending on if it was trash day or not. Um, you have the, the trash cans on the sidewalks on the side of the roadway. So it is not, people would literally have to step off the sidewalk into the road to go around the debris and so forth. So. Next slide, please, sir. Um, Newman Road, we looked at Newman Road. We got a lot of input from the residents there. Um, we had, um, um, the, there is a, a res- a senior resident facility. We do some volunteer work with them and that was one of the things that they brought to our attention. Newman Road has no sidewalks. It is a two-lane road and it's just as small as, um, Lake Road is. Um, I can't see us putting, um, a bike path on that road, but what the residents do need is a sidewalk. And, uh, we moved that location up to, um, the third. I know it's not part of the bike study, but we wanted to stress that the residents um, are concerned about that particular, particular stretch of highway because we have a lot of seniors who ride their electric cars. Um, and it's just an issue with them having to navigate the traffic. You know, there is a school that's also on that road as well. So it's a dangerous street for, for anybody. Uh, Boche Road is, uh, where Lamarck High School is. Um, the interesting thing about Boche Road is they have a, I call it a multi-use sidewalk because it's wide enough for three to four people to walk one direction on. Um, we could install a bike lane there if we wanted to, um, but I think, um, Boche is fine just, just the way it is because there's, the sidewalk is enough to accommodate people walk, walking and biking. Because they have the school district there. Next slide, please. Um, this was interesting to me. Um, as long as you have bike lanes, storage racks, signage or other cycling related features, you have a bike facility. And so right now, if you go to the next slide, um, I learned a lot during this bike audit. Right now, we have bike racks located in, I think, five of our parks and there is one at the Lamarck Pub- Public Library. I learned that students don't ride bikes to school. They don't have bike racks. There's nowhere for kids to put them when they come, so they don't encourage bikers to school. Um, I don't, I haven't seen any businesses in the city with bike racks if, if anybody else has, I haven't. So I think part of the problem is, um, there is just not been enough attention given to, um, our biking community. Um, and I think if we make some type of, um, initiatives to put biking paths that might increase, um, some of our, um, riders. Next. Um, one thing that I did notice, um, I see pedestrian signs near schools and churches. Roads that have high traffic or high pedestrian traffic, I barely saw any signs other than at the intersection. And at the intersections, they have the verbiage on those little things when you push the buttons. You can't read the, any of them. And I think I asked somebody about that and we're supposed to be reporting them to, is it Texas dot or somebody to get them fixed? Uh, I noticed that at a lot of those intersections where they have the lights.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, we can go to the next slide. Our recommendation is that we put just conventional bike lane on Bayou or Cedar, since we already have, um, the, the tools that we need to, to get one installed. Most of the other locations, if you guys decide to install, um, bike lanes, is going to require some work and hopefully we can get some grants to take care of that. The next slide, please. We had a total of eighty-eight observations within a week's period. Uh, we audited from eight to ten and four to six, and then we audited from ten to twelve. And, um, I believe seven to eight to see what our biking community was doing. And so those are the number of people that we saw, um, during our audit, which was eighty-eight participants. Okay, next slide. Excuse me, um, as I said, um, excuse me, students are not biking to schools. Um, people are not biking to work because they don't have any place to store their bikes. Um, and for the most part, um, in those areas that, um, people are not able to get out like Newman Road or Lake Road. Um, people are not biking because it's not safe for them to get on the roads. Okay, and the next slide. As I said before, our recommendations is to repair the signals that are at Lake and Cedar. Um, and take a look at the ones at Bayou and Cedar. Um, I noticed that within our city limits, I think it's Lake Road, um, and one other intersection, a four-way stop. There is no, um, pedestrian signage or crossings or any street markings whatsoever. I noticed a lot of the, the street markings are either faded or not visible at all. Um, again, we recommend conventional bike lanes and we, um, recommend sidewalks on Lake Road two and Newman Road and that the bike ought to be included in the Safe City Initiative. That's my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Tanya. Ms., 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 Ms. Tanya, Ms. Tanya.
Yeah, you're not gonna get away.
Why don't you be a, your shirt says, be a good human. Why don't you? You are a good human, Tanya. I'm just teasing. Counsel, do we have any questions for, uh, Ms. Griffin?
I would like to know what happened to the walking study.
We didn't get approved for that. They're still gonna apply for it the next go-round. But we have the toolkit. We can do it at any time.
And why'd we stay focused on just that one small area? Cause across Cedar, we could have, could use a lot of help. Cause there's a lot or across Highway three on Cedar in that area. There's a lot of bikers over there. I see a ton of people on bikes.
And I've seen groups on Highway three. Um, and one of the things that I, uh, want to encourage is that a lot of people don't know where our parks are. And we have put in a request to have signage put around town. So bikers can know that we have parks and they have a place where they can go and use our biking facilities. And so when we put the call out for input from volunteers in the community about places we wanted to look at, those were the places that we looked at.
However, uh,
Do you, do you, do you have a specific location or you want us to continue Cedar or?
Texas Avenue down Cedar to Highway three, Oak Avenue.
Okay.
From Texas Avenue to seventeen sixty-five.
We can talk.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a lot. That's.
That's just, but that's just really.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, uh, Ms. Nance, are you getting that? You getting, okay. All right. We just need a record. We need a record of it.
Open your mouth, everybody here.
That's right.
Don't get me stoked. Don't get me started now.
Did you wanna add something?
I just wanted to add that we have the tools to be able to do more. Obviously, volunteers would be necessary to do the next step. Um Ms. Tanya and the Parks Board uh through this and the volunteers have fulfilled what the grant requirement was. There there was an ask for more areas, so if there's more areas necessary, um the the Parks Board now has the tools to do both. But it would need another cycle, so we would have to do it in phase. That that's already a large quadrant. We have to have to expand that.
Okay, good deal. And Kira's uh taking uh notes about possible, James, she's getting getting down what you what you thought. Uh I thought.
And so all of you should have that same. Okay.
Let me, let me know when y'all wanna do it.
I'll try instructions from from Ms. Yancy.
That's right.
Okay.
So I wanna say that has been a powerful undertaking, um because I think when we're talking about safety. Um safety has to do with people being comfortable to come outside. And I think the 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 high school uh would love to join in with you. I would love to join in with you to really celebrate bicycle and, you know, cause there usually be a time you saw kids going down Lake Road. But my, when my mom worked on Lake Road, you always saw kiddos driving, riding their bikes, going going to Lake Road Elementary. So I look forward to the results of your audit and seeing what we can do. Good job. That was a good job. I didn't even know that we weren't doing it, but on another, and I wanna add anything to your plate. But when you go to the city of Austin, you see them not only doing regular bikes, but also the mopeds and. Electric bikes and.
I saw a feeling of.
And the smart technology that are even coming in even more to make ci- cities safer. So I look forward to you adding that to your plate.
And so I would just like to repeat.
Yeah.
The purpose of this audit was to look at bike paths within the city of Lamar.
Yeah.
So if anybody has any areas.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Proton, you didn't wanna, Ms. Tanya. You, did you have something?
Yeah. I wanted to say thank you. It's a pleasure working with you, the Parks Board, on this project as well too. Uh the the picture that you had up there of the. Taken on Cedar Drive of the trash bins on the sidewalk. And and we know Cedar Drive is very, it's a small. It's a small road. Uh at least it's concrete. Uh but. We we don't, the city doesn't provide any recommendations to property owners when they put out their trash. Of not putting it on the sidewalk. Um and so my question is, and this is just a a fol- this is a follow-up item. Uh Mr. Manager, Mr. Garcia, is engaging with waste management to determine whether the. The automated um, what is it? The hook that's the arms? To collect the, are they long enough to reach it the trash bin if it's put on the on the yard? Off off of the sidewalk.
If you've never ridden down Cedar on the right-hand side. On the other side of the sidewalk is a ditch. In most areas on Cedar, you have the ditch, the sidewalk, the parking stops. Very small sidewalk. I I've just.
Is there a sidewalk on the other side? No, it's just one side. Sidewalks on one side.
Yeah, and it's a small sidewalk. And so they don't have anywhere else to put their trash cans.
Well, all all I'm, all I would like to know, if it were help, because I I've seen this, right? Uh and even in guidance, when people are stacking up their their uh their bush limbs and stuff like that. I've noticed that they're putting it on the sidewalk. I've seen that in other parts of town as well too. Giving us guidance all that that put it on your yard. Don't block the sidewalk because people, especially people on wheelchairs. I see people on wheelchairs that use the sidewalks as well too. Now that brings me to my next question. In terms of the guidance that your recommendations that you're making to the city. Are you saying that we should have, we should have the bike lanes? Ex- exclusively set forth on, I think it was Lake you said. Oh, I mean, on here, on Bayou, on Bayou.
I said Cedar and.
And a section of Cedar, not the one that way, but this way. And um and then, having said that, then people riding bikes would use the bike lane. And not the sidewalk.
They don't ride bikes on sidewalks, Mayor Proton.
They don't ride bikes on sidewalk.
They ride in the road. They either go the direction of the traffic, against the traffic. In the middle, they do not stay on sidewalk.
Okay, so the the um, you're talking about that wider sidewalk near the school on on Voche. Would 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 it be helpful or that you said would accommodate bikes is what I heard you say, right?
On Voche, the sidewalk is.
And so would it be helpful to also then have painted on the sidewalks? A a pedestrian symbol, as I've seen in other communities, as well as a bike symbol. On there to to alert people that you could use both of them. Well, that's the purpose of this and it's a beginning. I had brought this project to the city manager with ARP. And uh they offer these opportunities at various parts of the year. And of the first time, we were not successful. We did that through uh Keep Lamar Beautiful. Ultimately, this second time around with the city manager's assistance, we're successful in this. And um and there are other opportunities there. So thanks. Thank you.
Well, we've already, um Ms. Atha has already started promoting bike safety. And we're gonna be talking about maybe hosting some type of bike bike event. Don't know what that looks like, but.
Oh, last thing. I did, you did make a comment during the um our hurricane borough. Where we're using this as a safe place for individuals. There were individuals that came in with bikes. And because we did not have a bike rack outside, they brought them inside for safety purposes. So I suggest that perhaps we might consider starting here at City Hall and placing a bike rack here.
Good idea.
Uh at at some point, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Um before I do that, uh Kira, would you um? Put in the uh uh minutes of the meeting that uh I'd like for us to look at a sidewalk. Uh going down Newman Road. Uh I visit many times with uh Ms. Tanya. The uh senior citizens uh uh multifamily units out on Newman Road. And every time we go, there is a complaint about safety and walking up and down that street. And children actually walk to and from school down that street. I believe Ms. Sally, is Ms. Sally with us? Ms. Sally lives on that street and she's all, she's been an advocate for that, for for sidewalks. So can we get an estimate before the council, please? Um that's not your job, but certainly remind the city manager. Thank you. Ms. Ms. Tanya, I just have a couple of rapid fire questions. Um in this survey, uh was there uh some sort of a question? That would ascertain how many of us actually ride bikes on a regular basis in the city of Lamar?
I didn't go that far. I just just went to those areas and and we just watched to see. Bikers and who was biking or where they were going to. The audit does ask us to tell what is facilities or in the the area, like churches, libraries. Uh because we wanna know where it is the biking community is going to. Now, we do know that they do go to the grocery stores. We saw a lot of them biking with groceries on their bikes and. You know.
Right, right.
No children, the only children we saw on bikes were at our parks.
That's interesting.
Never seen any kid on, I've seen them on the little electric cars. But I have not seen any kids in those areas.
That's really interesting. I don't know what that says about.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And when I found out that there was no bikes at school, that just really concerned.
Right, right. I think we should probably explore that. I mean, not not this, but I mean, as as a community, what what that's all about. Last thing I wanted to ask you, you said. We currently have no designated biking lanes and yet.
On.
They down by you, they painted these bike lanes. So those are not legitimate?
Paint bike lanes. They just put the bike.
The bike marking.
Yeah.
And so that you have to have permission to do the bike lane or?
Basically have to do is go add that solid line.
That's what it is. I got you, I got you. So you, so that's why you're saying, yeah, because all it is is a a symbol and not, I got you.
You basically have to do that, that solid line.
Yes, ma'am.
Some bike signs and.
There you go. That's all I had for you.
Mayor, man, just real quick.
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
On those items, those are actually uh dual-use lanes, markings. So that's why those were put on there.
Okay.
But absolutely, it's something we can look into the future.
Good deal, good deal. Thank you, Ms. Tanya. Thank you, Parks Board, uh if you all are listening. Let's move now to item four six. There's a presentation on the street assessment uh coming from. Adico, is that right? Brent, hello Brent.
We're gonna quickly use this one together, man.
Absolutely, Mr. Garcia.
Uh it's with great uh pride that we finally bring this forward. This was our street assessment that uh council authorized us to do. With Dent's help and uh those folks that are there. But before you, I printed it in your folder, a little bit larger to see, but it's also on the screen for everybody. If anybody needs a bigger copy, I have a couple extras. What it is, is there's a grading system that was put for every single street. Adico's charge was to go and mark every single street and pretty much grade it. So your grading system technically exists one through five with the understanding of the. Percentages to why it needs to be replaced on and so forth. So um this breaks down exactly the whys, right? Uh this gives you a color-coded map that allows you to look at your entire city so that when you do select a certain road to be repaired, there is backup documentation. Vinnie, next slide please. For the color coding, for those at home following along, everything in red that you will see on the map is gonna signify the streets that are very poor. Uh with green being the ones that are considered very good. As you move along, the bottom, the next uh uh table down below is a brief cost estimate of exactly what it would cost to repair these streets in these areas. As you see exactly the zones, whi- which which it would cost per zone. So that is something that we could take a look at there. The next uh next page, please, Vinnie. The top of that table shows you uh that what we call our category five. Um not to mimic the hurricanes, but it happens to be the actual worst. Uh which shows which ones are the worst streets. And I I I I do wanna commend Adico here. They not only put the street name, the direction, how far. What type of road, what type of pavement type, and the estimated length of each one of those roads. For us to have a really good cost estimate. And right below that, in in table five, it shows you what the cost would be. Uh roughly for each one of those streets that are named. So these are the ones that we 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 talked about a a a top ten list, if you will, that we had in the past. And these are um the the very worst ones. Next slide, please. Uh next one, please. All right, so this map may be a little bit hard to see. What we tried to do was make sure that we designated which streets were designated the worst. By district. So the dotted lines represent the difference in each district. We wanna make sure that there was a difference. Everybody knew were blurred lines. It was very hard to put the dotted lines on streets because some of the streets are those dividers. But this is here for you to have a general idea of which streets are figured to be some of the worst. Next page, please. The rest of these sheets that are here is a breakdown of every single street and what the grade is. I do wanna uh comment real quick. Uh can you go back one slide, Vinnie, please? One more. There we go. I do wanna just uh go inside here that as part of this study, council did authorize us. To uh make sure that the study included the streets in Omega Bay. Those are shown here. They are highlighted. Obviously, it's a little bit harder to see here because it's printed bigger, but it's a little bit more visible on the map. And these eventually would be platted onto much bigger, larger sheets of paper. But uh as far as a study of your street assessment for the city, that concludes this report. As to where you are us for the entire city in the condition of each one of your roads by road. Any thankful questions? Bring us here to respond. But that concludes the presentation. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Brett, did you have anything?
Oh, yeah, I just wanna add, just to clarify, cause I know when when folks look at these, they think it's okay, you're gonna re-. Repair the streets and this is only the pavement. We only looked at the pavement. Does not include drainage, only pavement. The condition of the pavement essentially and and how much it would take to rehabilitate the pavement or bring it up to. Maybe a a higher rating, so to speak. This is just a a tool to be used to determine um which streets should be. Put into a rehabilitation program first. So it just rates the streets, so you have an idea as to which are your worst streets, which are your best streets. So just in case you have a rehabilitation program, you determine, okay, I'm gonna move this street up to rating number three as opposed to five and so on.
Let me ask you this, Brent, before we open it up. You said that this does not con- consider any potential drainage work that needs to be done. Did you just say that?
Yes, it's just the pavement.
The street.
Yes.
Does it?
pavement assessment.
So 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 is it just the top layers of the street or is it the entire street?
Well, we can't see below the street. All we could see is what we could physically see the top layer. But people who design those streets know that you can't just remove the top layer and put in a new top layer. That's why we work in the the amount that that it costs to rehabilitate the street. Taking into consideration the subgrade and all of that good stuff.
Where it says uh rehabilitation unit costs per mile, that's for from down, that's from the top layer down to the. To the foundation of the street.
That's correct, the subgrade.
So those streets, these streets that are in very poor condition. And poor condition. Drainage repair is not in consideration.
No, this was strictly a pavement assessment.
So 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 Brent, he- here's my question. Do we know if the street's condition uh is associated with some sort of. A malfunction in our drainage system?
We 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 could.
Sewer water system.
We could determine that, however, this was strictly for pavement assessment. Um to to look at whether, we we just determined, okay, what's the condition of the pavement? Not what caused the condition of the pavement.
So if we were to, if we were to, I guess, and I, the the question that I really wanna ask is, if we were to then choose, for example. There's a uh, let's say, uh metal lane.
Yeah.
If we were to choose that street to be rehabbed. How would we know if uh there is or is not some sort of infrastructure issue? That's causing the deterioration of the street. So we go and we do redo this entire street. And then there's a problem underneath.
Can I just help with that just one second, Mayor?
Go ahead, go ahead.
There was a study going back to twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen that we've been doing some of the water uh leak repairs. As well as those two inch line replacements. We have not done, we've not overlapped those two yet. But that would address some of the questions that you're asking as far as water line repair. The suggestion at the time would not be, do not proceed with any street repairs where water line repairs are needed. We learned that during the bond assessment, that the bond project that we had, there were some streets that unfortunately have had to be torn up since. And we said moving forward, we would make sure that we do water line repairs in line or ahead of time of said um street repairs.
And so before this council makes any decisions on streets, we would know, we are going to know. Which streets have water line issues, which streets have sewer issues, sewer, right?
Yes, sir.
Which streets have drainage issues so that we would steer clear of those. We're gonna know that. Okay.
Yes, sir. That's, that's not, it was not part of this scope. But we can't cross reference the water. The sewer is something we could work with 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 the engineers to take, to make sure we get done.
So can I answer your question?
Yes.
Yes, so so let's just say you select a street. We wouldn't tell you, this does not tell you, okay, go just resurface the street. This tells you where does this street lie between five and one. And if you wanna say, okay, this is a really bad, let's say it's number three and you wanna move it up to perhaps number two. Um then you would determine, okay, what is involved in bringing that street up to number two? Or perhaps just making the street a brand new street altogether. It's not, it wouldn't just involve just resurfacing the street. We'd look at everything that affects the street before we could determine what needs to be done. Because like as you, as you clearly said, you know, we just looked at the pavement, the surface, the rideability. How the surface looks, um how how cracked up the street is, how many potholes are there, just the pavement. Which tells you, okay, when people drive on that street, how bad it is, how good it is. Now, if you if you choose to rehabilitate a street, then it's more involved than just saying, just just resurface the street. You'd have to determine what is the cause of the problems that that street is seeing before you actually go and do that.
So again, just to be clear, uh before this council makes any recommendations uh to be included in a bond package. Uh or even in our own street maintenance program, we will know beyond a shadow of a doubt, five council members. If there are any potential dangers. Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
And I would advise council to request that information as well.
Say that to me again, Brett, so I can understand.
I would request council to request that information, which includes anything that affects.
And who will we request that from?
Basically, if I can, once we're determined, hey, we're looking at, let's say, all level five streets. Hey, let's go look at if there's anything else in the line of level five. And then we could do it in that way so we can be more thorough and efficient.
Gotcha. Counsel.
I think this is great. I think we need, is this online?
It's not yet because it's for your approval tonight. It's an agenda item later tonight. Assuming that there's no changes, then you give us the marching order so then be able to release it. But it's on the agenda tonight for review.
So what this does to, is to let our residents know the quality of the street, uh, from an expert, from an engineer, to say if it's level one, two, three, four, five. I live on Meadow Lane, so I know it's a five. I know my residents on Brown and Jefferson, they would say there are five, and they are. And I think this gives us some leeway, some transparency, right? That's why it was online because now I can say, go find your street online and you'll see what is the condition of your street. And this becomes an advocacy tool that you use when you come to your city and say, I want my street to be fixed. When will it be fixed? What can we do to get it fixed? What is it gonna cost? On one of the ones just for Meadow Lane, he was like almost half, half, uh, half, well, five hundred thousand dollars, five hundred, five hundred seventy thousand or something like that. So and it also educates our, our constituency on the cost of this. So this is, this is really good. Um, yeah, that's all I have, man.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, and, and just to, to add on to that, obviously, these are rough estimates.
Right.
Made by engineering one and two, it is not taking consideration if you were going to change the type of road. So if it is asphalt and you want to switch to concrete or vice versa, if you're gonna go back to asphalt, that is not included here. That is just going to keep the same condition of what it would be there now.
But who wants to live on a road stage five?
I'm not, nobody does. And actually, we'll have some items later on in this, in this, uh, meeting agenda tonight to address some of those streets. So I, I think the timing of it is perfect.
Well, I'm a, I'm a school teacher, so I can say until you live on a, you live on a, uh, road five. I live on a two. But it's a good tool to know where we need to go. And then when we come to the, to the citizen seat, the constituency about a, a possible bond package, the information is already there. Thank you.
Certainly. And assuming that, uh, this item passes tonight for approval, we will be ready to share this in the morning. As you know, we've already contacted the county about a possible bond package, including some of these estimates. And, uh, they've already requested this, assuming that it is passed tonight.
Mr. Ross, Mr. Compey on?
I don't have anything.
I, I, I'm a more, I'm a bit more visual. What, um, which is I'm gonna go out and do anyway. I will be going to visit some of the streets that are listed in B and take photos. I, because I don't understand your rankings. That, I, I see them here, but I don't know what visually in my mind. I look at some of the streets here that you've ranked. And I think of some others that are far worse than what you've ranked here. That's, that's why I think in your ranking, it would be helpful to have just a photograph of what is a category very good. What do you consider very good? Guess a very good would be Cedar Drive, which is concrete. Very good would be the concrete that's going out toward, uh, uh, the, the park. Uh, Mayan Park. So that's, that's my only, uh, comment and, uh, and with regard to the issue of the, it would be helpful, perhaps in your category of streets, and we could easily see those that are open ditch would be helpful to have an indication, open ditch. Uh, as opposed to like the Meadow Lane, that's a curb on it.
It's, it's indicated.
Whi- which, which, which line is that? Which one?
It's, it's in the backup.
The two from the last.
Fix page, uh, take fix if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, I, I see it, the concrete curb and gutter, asphalt, open ditch. Very good.
And that's again, assuming we're gonna keep it that way. Back to Mayor's point that he just made, if, and, and even to the point that Tanya made, if there's ever a future use where you'd like to enclose that ditch, make it underground, uh, drainage, and then put a sidewalk over anything else of that nature, then or curb, curb and gutter where one doesn't exist, we would have to address these estimates.
Okay, so on, on taking this street here, Duro is on both sides. It's an A and B. But you're only talking about Duro and B.
When we, when we look at a street, we look at, in here, we look at the entire streets. However, when you, when you take a look at the exhibit, then it shows you what the cut, what, what the classification is based on what district boundary is. So, so we don't, we wouldn't necessarily recommend, um, rehabilitation of a street only in a portion in one district. We, we look at the street that's priority in the city. If it runs from District A to District B, we look at the entire street. Rather than break it up into District A or District B, you know, if the street needs rehabilitated, you know, we'd prefer to, I think it would be best to look at the entire street as opposed to, um, make the residents of District A happy and not District B.
Okay.
This is just an example.
And certainly, Mayor Potem, we, we could come back with some images, uh, as, as some, size, some examples if needed. Done, Joe?
Yeah, oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
We all done? Brent, you survived another one, man. I was, I was scared for you there.
Doing my job.
Thank you, Brent. I'm teasing. Good job.
You're welcome.
And Mayor, this, this item is gonna be an actual item later on the agenda, sir.
Okay. Stick around, Brent.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll remember something. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are now at item five. Citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up and speak to council limited to three minutes. If a person wishing to speak, you give the mayor and the presiding officer, officer, your full legal name, address, and I am you wish to speak about applies with Texas Open Meeting Act. The city may not deliberate comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Personnel matters should be addressed to city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself if you are participating via telephone. Uh, press the microphone icon in the lower portion of your screen if you are participating via Zoom on a smartphone, tablet, or computer. Uh, if you are here with us in person, uh, you may approach the podium to the center, uh, and you will be heard, uh, when your name is called. Vinnie, are there any persons online wishing to speak? Robert Harvey.
I think he left.
Yeah, I'm gonna call him one more time now. Robert Harvey does not appear to be with us today at this time. Rashard Loftus. Welcome, Rashard. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, I just want to ask for your, uh, support on the, uh, item about the library, uh, that KLMC, uh, put together. Uh, my, uh, my committee, my committee, the committee, uh, worked very hard trying to get that done. So, um, we just asking that you would make sure that it gets, hopefully get approved so we can paint the library as part, as part of our beautification project. And, uh, secondly, I want to take this time to publicly, uh, say thank you to the city manager for all the work you've done for this city. Uh, in your role, uh, it's, it's a job that you're not gonna please everybody. And you and I, we've, we've had our back and forths and this and that. I've been a pain in your butt. You know, you've been a pain in my butt as well. But for the most part, we've worked through all that. And I just want to publicly say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Loftus. Let's move now to item six, uh, public hearing. Conduct public hearing to hear public input on, uh, item six one, ordinance number letter O dash two zero two four dash zero zero two two. Acknowledging and accepting updated information pertaining to the twenty twenty-four water conservation plan as is brought to us via Public Works. Our regularly scheduled meeting, uh, will close at
seven thirty-nine.
And we will open our public hearing at seven thirty-nine. Are there any persons online wishing to speak to item six one? Any persons online wishing to speak to item six one? Is there any person before us here tonight wishing to speak to item six one? Any person before us tonight wishing to speak to item six one? We'll close the public hearing at
seven thirty-nine.
We will, we will reopen our regular meeting at seven thirty-nine. Counsel, many of these items, uh, items that we've had in our packet for review, uh, it is seven forty. And this agenda is lengthy. So if we can, let's be efficient and let's go. Seven, old business. Items presented to council for discussion and possible action, seven one, ordinance number letter O dash two zero two four dash zero zero two two. Acknowledging and accepting updated information pertaining to the water conservation plan. This is the second and final reading. I'll entertain a motion.
No move.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight, new business. Items presented to council for the discussion and possible action. Eight one, resolution number R, letter R dash two zero two four dash zero zero six zero, adopting a, adopting a covered applicants and prohibited technology policy in accordance with Texas Senate Bill one eight nine three of the eighty-eighth legislature. This is brought to us by City Attorney's Office. I will entertain a motion.
No move.
Is that second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight two, resolution number, letter R dash two zero two four dash zero zero six one. Assigning signatories for general land office, state contract number two two dash zero eight five dash zero zero, zero three dash D two two three. Ms. Nance, is there anything you need to add?
Um, no, this is just a housekeeping item for our, for our grant signers.
Very good. I will entertain a motion.
Move.
Is that second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight through eight four, oh, three, eight three. Resolution number, letter R dash two zero two four dash zero zero six two, assigning signatories for general land office, state contract number two two dash zero eight three dash zero zero three dash D two zero eight. Ms. Nance, housekeeping?
Yes, sir.
Entertain a motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight four, memorandum of understanding. Memorandum of understanding between the City of Lamarck and Public Works Department for Expenditure of ARPA Funds. I will entertain a motion.
Move.
Is that second?
Second.
Mr. Garcia, did you need to elaborate?
No, sir. This was formalizing the allocation sheet. Uh, this item and the next three are formalizing the allocation sheet you already proved us march forward with.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight five, memorandum of understanding, memorandum of understanding between the City of Lamarck and the Finance Department for Expenditure of ARPA Funds. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Is that second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight six, memorandum of understanding. Memorandum of, of understanding between the City of Lamarck and the Fire Department for Expenditure of ARPA Funds. I will entertain a motion.
No move.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight seven, memorandum of understanding between the City of Lamarck and the Police Department for the Expenditure of ARPA Funds. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight eight, ARPA bid award, approving bids submitted for citywide solar lighting improvements and utilizing ARPA funds. Mr. Garcia, did any, do you need to elaborate on anything?
No, sir. This is one of those items that was just a part of the MOU that you just approved. It was already on the allotted list. Uh, this is to move this item forward, uh, with some potential solar lighting for some of the areas it needed that you approved.
I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight nine, ARPA, uh, bid award, approving bids submitted for citywide asphalt milling overlay roadway improvements and utilizing ARPA funds. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight ten, ARPA bid award, approving bid submission for road improvement project and utilizing ARPA funds. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight eleven, acceptance of grant award, requesting approval to accept a no-match grant award of two million dollars for the community project funding. In thirty seconds or less, did you want to remind us what that was?
Certainly. This was the, uh, appropriation that was done through the government appropriations through, uh, Congressman Weber's office. This was, uh, something that you agreed for us to pursue, no match, uh, and in order for us to attain this, uh, for, to address more waterline, uh, in, in District D. Uh, this would be in addition to the other four million that were received through the MIT mod grant. So this would be an additional two million dollars of waterline work.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight twelve, acceptance of grant award, acceptance of a grant award for the HGAC Liverpool Center Study. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, sir. This was a planning grant. I want to thank Tanya, who's gone with the bike audit. This was obviously, uh, helping in that planning initiative. We applied through HGAC. I believe both Councilman Yancy and Mayor Potem Compey brought this to us. Uh, we pursued this and worked with HGAC on the submission. Uh, we have been awarded a total, uh, funding of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars with a ten percent match. EDC has graciously, uh, grace, graciously accepted to, uh, cover fifteen percent of that match or fifteen thousand of that match, of the twenty-three thousand match. And the other eight thousand was matched through another grant that we applied through ICMA. So it'll essentially be a zero-cost grant match uh, for, uh, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to go towards a planning study, which will cover the east side of forty-five for the enti- or the entirety of that entire sector of the city.
Thank you, sir. We want to thank, uh, Ms. Yancy, Mr. Compey on for their work on this, uh, as well as the Economic Development Corporation for their, uh, their resources to help us to meet the match, uh, and, uh, we entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mayor, just one moment.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
If we could please also, uh, recognize, uh, Ms. Terry Leo Wilson and Dr. Bonner, who also helped us with their support for this funding.
Very good. Let the, uh, let the record reflect that Mrs., uh, Representative Wilson and Bonner, both of them, uh, certainly assisted us with this. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight thirteen, updated street signs, approving and updated street sign design to incorporate the All America City logo, uh, logo for needed street sign replacements. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Is that second?
You have to pick which one you want. Can you?
Ah!
Right, we need to see if we can get it on the screen here. Vinnie's page three fourteen.
We don't want to make that decision alone. There are twenty thousand of us.
If you remember, Mayor, we brought to you the street design, uh, before, and I'm looking at the page. It might not look perfectly, uh, okay here. But essentially, we brought the streets, the revised street sign before was the blue street sign with the street name and then the city seal. One of the things we talked about doing was possibly adding the, um, the, the All American logo next to it. And we're looking, it's, yeah, we, we gotta, it's, it's not gonna look good on this thing. We'll, we'll do, we'll print it. And we'll, we'll get you a printout here real quick and, and get that. I thought it would look better on here, but it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't look the best there. You can't, you can't.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, Ms. Agatha designed it so she could probably show it a little better. We could also get you printouts if you want to take it real quick. We can come back with printouts.
All America City logo on one side versus the other.
So, so, so Agatha, for those that are, that, that can't see that, up and down by you, there are new blue signs with the city logo.
Yes.
And all we're asked, being asked is, do we want to add the All America City logo as well on the opposite side of the sign?
That is correct.
Well.
Either on the opposite side or.
But not on the ones that are already done.
Correct. On the new one.
On the new one.
On the ones that still have to be done.
Okay, okay. All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Agatha.
Kind of like the one with the
You like the top one?
With the symbol.
I like the second one at the bottom.
All America City on the end or in the beginning?
At the beginning. I like the bottom. I like them at the bottom. The, the second one with the symbol at first.
So you wanna, you want to entertain a motion, Ms. Yancy, to, uh, adopt the one with the All America City, if you're facing it, the All America logo on your left and the city logo on your right?
Yes.
Is that good enough, Kier, for us to?
That's the motion.
All right, that's the motion. Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussions? Hearing now, we'll call for vote. Hearing now, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight-fourteen, street assessment. Accepting the twenty-twenty-four street assessment as presented by Attic Engineering. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Eight-fifteen, uh, final plat extension. Requesting a six-month extension on the final plat of Ambrose Section Three. Uh, Mr. Garcia, thirty seconds or less, what is this about?
This is just a six-month extension request by the folks from Ambrose Section Three. They may not need all six months. It's a standard request. Uh, we, we permanently believe they may not need it at all since they did already make some, some progress there.
Okay.
But this is a formality for us to accept that.
Counsel, any questions on this?
No.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight sixteen, library mural. Authorizing a mural at the Lamarck Public Library as recommended by the Keep Lamarck Beautiful Commission. I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Can I have Rashard come back up here if we have any questions?
Rashard, are you able to come back up here to answer any questions? In case we have them? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What type of mural is it?
Yeah, we just really need to know what, what the mural, what's the mural, the picture going to be on. Ah, there it is. Look at that. Well, you, you look at that. Is that in the front?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you blow it up a little bit, Vinnie? Just for, uh, Mayor, this, uh, KLMC has worked on this project through, uh, KLMC along with Code. This would be what it would look like in the, in, in the front entrance should this be selected. They went through extensive review at several meetings to bring this forward. And this would be the final, um, up mock-up, obviously. This is the same artist, correct me if I'm wrong, that did the mural across the street at the Animal Alliance?
Yes.
So this would be the same artist who, who did that work there with, with the animals.
Are we still getting, splitting it with the Parks Board or?
No, I don't believe so.
No.
We, I, I believe we approved, uh, thirty-eight hundred, uh, to, to have that painted.
That's good.
That's it? When we getting out there with special washer?
Okay.
That, that's part of, it's, I believe that the site prep is part of the actual project.
Okay. Very good.
Let me ask, there, there's two different murals. What's the other one for?
There were different designs that were presented. This is the final.
Oh, that, this, this, this one is the one?
Yeah, not just going through what all the different iteration of what they did, this being the final that was presented. Correct me if I'm wrong. So this is the final.
And, um, I spoke with, uh, Lindsay, the, the, um, chair today. She told me that the guy had actually went over there to, um, possibly start, but then he realized that we had to, um, bring this before council.
He did, he was in the package, so he was ready to go.
Is, is this the same person that did the, uh, mural on the, um, the EDC buildings?
No.
No.
A different guy? Okay.
And different person did the basketball court.
Different from the basketball court as well?
Guy did the Animal Alliance across the street.
Okay.
Person.
Okay. Okay. Any more, any further questions? I, I have a question. At the, the front of the, the building, it, what is the material on the front of the library? What, what do you call that?
Great.
I see panels. They're panels.
Never mind.
Mayor, this is trick, but I mean, it's kind of a combination of, of rock.
Yeah, I was thinking about the rock.
The rock.
It's, it's not a smooth surface.
So, yeah, my question was, will that be okay on that surface? Is that going to work out?
Yes.
Okay.
The artist seems to believe that, that, that they are able to do that on that surface.
Good deal. So I need to know.
That's my, man, I had the same question. I asked if we needed to scrape the rock off or we need to do. And my understanding was that, uh, KLMC did thorough review.
Very good. Ms. Nance, where we, do we need a motion or?
We have a minute and a second. I'd need a vote.
That's it. Let's call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Loftus.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Eight-seventeen, historic district. Considering renaming certain areas of District A and creating a historical district. I believe this was more about creating the historical district.
Period.
So that we can then start.
Yes, it was just a continuation, so that's why.
Okay.
We didn't change it. Um, the supporting documents in this are just, um, examples that we found just to see if that's where you want to lean into or if we are having the complete wrong thought and need to readjust. Um, I believe we used what the City of Galveston has as their historical district. That's kind of a baseline and seeing if you liked any of it, didn't like it. You want us to go back to the drawing board, what the council's thoughts were.
Well, counsel, let's, uh, let's, uh, as efficiently as possible give Kier our feedback. Uh, who wants to start?
I just think maybe we need to have a workshop on it once we get the, the documents. So we can kind of, and we can do that for, let's say, the month of February.
There you go. Good deal. Look at, look at you, Ms. Yancy.
And, yeah, we need to make sure we have all the, all the state documents that go along with it, not just.
Yeah.
The ordinance from Galveston, but what the state requires, because there's a lot more than.
If this is.
If, if I may, is the ask, be, because there are, there are, there is a, you can have a local historical district. You can do a state. You can comply with the state program and then you can even do the National Historic Register. Is the ask to bring y'all all three of those, one of those, two of, all three?
I think they ask us to bring us all three, explain all three to us so that we can see what fits best with our city. Uh, because I can tell you right now, Galveston is a very historical place. I mean, they have a lot of history and so, so they, their program would probably be a whole lot more stringent and specific than what we might need here. So we want to, uh, great work though, great work. We just want to make sure that we are understanding what those things are that we're, we're being asked to decide on. You're good with that, Ms. Yancy? You said February? Bring it back in February? Thank you. Let's move now to eight-eighteen. Texas Coalition for Affordable Power. Casting votes for the Texas Coalition of Affordable Power Board of Directors for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six term. I will entertain a nomination. Right? Or a person that we are going to vote for persons?
Well.
Yes.
Just reading this. We have to cast one vote for eight.
That's what I was going to say. There's eight different positions. You can't vote one person. You would need eight.
Yeah.
Nominations.
And I'm just making it simple because I don't know any. I'm just going to nominate that we cast one vote for, for the, for these, the four, the top four here. This South Texas Water Authority is not a, is not a municipality, not a city of this.
But there's not, there's nine people on here and we have to prove, you have to choose eight?
Eight, eight votes.
Are you going to list out eight for us, Joe, so that we can expedite this?
Okay. Chong Fong and, and Amy Ferguson, Henry, uh, Arizondo, Clifford Howard, Carrie Neal, Clayton, Fulton, Mark, Poland, and Gilbert Reyna. That's my proposal. Motion.
Does anybody have anything different? Sounds good to me.
I'm second it.
There is, there's no discussion on nominations. Let's call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight-nineteen, virtual meeting, authorizing the continuation or discontinuation of virtual meeting, uh, participation in boards, commissions, uh, council and committee meetings. Counsel, this, uh, was born, uh, in the pandemic. It has proven to be extremely valuable, uh, in open government in, in this, uh, democracy in which we live. Uh, but it is up to us if we choose to continue or discontinue. But Kier needs, uh, direction. So I will entertain a motion either way.
I make the motion that we continue with. I find it very valuable. And, um, when sickness come, then we're still able to, um, perform, we're still able to do that. So I'm in favor of that, so I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item eight-twenty, boards and commissions, appointing, reappointing, removing members of the board, commissions and committees. Counsel, do we have any, uh, appointments that we would like to make tonight?
No, but I, I would just need to, I know it's December. Can you just let me know who else needs to be, um, appointed? Did, did we do that last month? I know we did, we made some. I didn't know if there was some more.
So there's a, uh, in that item, behind the agenda form, there's the list of who each district would need to appoint. And then there's also a list of, uh, applications that we have in the file for each board.
On, on, on this, you're saying?
Yes, it would be, uh, titled, if you're looking at the little thumbnails, it's EOI Appointments Twenty-four. Um, the first two pages are who needs to be or what positions are open. And then the second two pages are the appointments and what, if they designated, um, each board as their primary or secondary requests.
So, so I see mine.
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to go ahead and reappoint those persons.
All, all, both.
Rashard Loftus and Tanya Griffin.
And you do have a, appointment for the Ordinance Review Committee. Um, you have a, a primary and an alternate that need to be appointed. And those will be the only ones you have. You did for public safety building, but you didn't do the ordinance review. Yes, sir.
Okay, let me think about that a little bit.
Okay.
I can, uh.
I can put this back on for January if you all would like.
Yeah.
Yeah. When, when does that start? When does that start again? That, the ordinance review, when is?
Once I have enough members, I only have alternates on that board right now.
Okay. Yeah, let me.
Well, under, I'm sorry. Under our new, aren't, aren't the individuals supposed to request that they get reappointed?
They are requi, they, uh, they can put in new applications for it. Um, I haven't had anyone tell me that they would not like to serve anymore. I know that we do have a letter, uh, from the EDC Board requesting to retain board member Smith. Um, no one has said, has withdrawn, um, so.
Because I kind of thought I had another one for planning and zoning that was open on the last list. Who, who was, uh, the?
Remember, we reduced the board sizes as well this past year.
Oh.
So each board only has five members, so each of you have one appointment on each board.
Any appointments?
So whereas before you would have had an additional, now you only have the one. It's okay.
Any appointments?
I, uh, I'm going to leave my appointments the way they are. And for the Ordinance Review Board, I would like to nominate Ray Medina since he has an application in for the charter slash ordinance review.
Anyone else?
You said you had the applications here?
Um, the physical applications are not on there just because they have some private information on them, but there is a list. Um, so you can see your list. If you scroll down the next page, we'll show you the applications on file.
Oh, I see.
And I can provide any of those applications to you if you'd like. We just don't add them to the backup document anymore because they have addresses and phone numbers.
I believe, uh, Gene Smith is, uh, my appointment, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will, uh, nominate Gene Smith to continue. You said the board, you said he wanted to continue and the board is happy with him? Gene Smith, is that right? James? Okay. I will entertain, uh, I will nominate Gene Smith to continue on, on the Economic Development Corporation. Any others?
How long are those terms?
Six years. Six years?
Yes, EDC are six years.
So peo, people are not yet aware that we've got the ordinance review open? Is that the one we're talking, ordinance?
The ordinance review, yes. So in the current, um, which we are working to change, in the current application, it still just says charter review. Um, so we're going to make that a dual, a dual, uh, selection. Because the charter review is only once every few years.
Any others? Mayor Potem.
No, no, I, I.
Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a second to those two nominations. Ray Medina was nominated for District D, uh, Ordinance Review Committee. And Gene Smith was nominated from Mayor for, uh, Economic Development Corporation.
Sorry, Mayor. Uh, Councilman Yancy asked to reappoint all of her positions. And then, uh, Councilman Ross also asked to reappoint his positions as they currently stand.
Are we doing that tonight? Well, I will nominate, reappoint my positions. There you go.
Yeah, that's all I say.
Get it all done. Joe, did you wanna?
We're doing that too, alright.
You, I was like, I can also bring it back the first meeting of January if you would like to, if anybody has any thing they wanna.
Just wait for January if you please, you look at these.
Yeah, with you, will you withdraw your, so let's consider tonight, in all seriousness, let's consider tonight the two names that were mentioned. Ray Medina and Gene Smith, and then, uh, we can all together on in January. Yeah, let's do that. Is that, is that okay? Okay, I will entertain a second. There is no discussion on nominations, and so we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? City manager's report. Uh, submitted report, uh, to update council and community on the standard operations of the city. Report can be acknowledged as a whole. Or discussed at the pleasure of council. Council, as always, I will read off these, uh, items. Uh, and if you choose to, uh, speak to one of these items, just let me know. Item nine, one, monthly statistics. Mr. Garcia, what would be considered monthly statistics?
Yeah, I'm not sure why it didn't show up all of them together, but included in the packet was library, court, P D and sales tax. Those are the one, I don't, I don't know why it wasn't. Library, court, P D and sales tax, and I could give a brief summary. Library, um, started off very well after ending the year strongly, um, submitting all other reports, um, they did very well. With hosting the small business, um, initiative meeting. As well as attending several trainings, uh, they, they did help with value fest. For, uh, they had over eighty children that participated, they also did. Um, they met with approximately fifty teachers at Haley on Wednesday, twenty third to share information about the library's program and services. Those are a few of the highlights for the library. Quickly on P D, uh, it's still two months left, but at the end of October, uh, crime is still below, another consecutive year that crime is still below. Um, for the third year in a row, uh, so we're on pace, it's too soon to say yet with November, December left, but we are on steady pace. That's page three sixty-three of the packet. Uh, sales tax, uh, we're off to a strong start. Uh, October, we're plus nine percent a year over year, November, we're plus seven percent. Uh, obviously, it's, it's, it's only averaging out, it's still early for the first few months, but we're plus eight percent for the year. Um, we, we cut it close last year, but we still did still, uh, end up higher than, than we had in the past. And I wanna highlight court, courts, uh, off to a great start for the month of October to start off the fiscal year, they ended it in a great note. Numbers are significantly higher now that they've streamlined that process, so we, we, looks like we've got that, um, steered in the right direction.
Thank you, sir. Nine, two, um, H G A C Parks and Natural Areas Award, does anyone wanna pull that? Nine, three, H G A C Parks and Natural Areas Award, uh, Mayhand Boat Ramp, does anyone wanna pull that? Nine, four, H G A C Parks and Natural Areas Award Arts in the Park, does anyone wanna pull that?
Mayor, just to briefly highlight those, those are three awards that the Parks Board, uh, was, was, um, submitted for. They did receive either, um, honorable mention, or I believe second place in one of them. Um, among the thirteen county region, so they'll be, the awards will be at H G A C on Friday, February twenty first at nine thirty A M. To honor all the winners, uh, as, as well as the, those that made a significant impact, so we've, uh, been able to be, receive an award of some sort in three of the categories. So kudos to the Parks Board for that.
Congratulations. Um, item nine, five, uh, items for the goodie of the order, Mr. Garcia.
Uh, I just wanna highlight a few of the events that are coming up. Um. We've got Reefs Across America that are coming up, uh, the fourteenth. Uh, it'll be over at the Lamar Cemetery seventeen oh nine, uh, South Oak. Next slide, please. Uh, the Christmas closure date, remind everybody it will be closed for December twenty fourth and twenty fifth. Next slide, please. Remind everybody the Pictures with Santa Saturday, December fourteenth, from eleven to two at the Lamar Public Library. Next slide, please. Remind everybody of the Letters with Santa program, um, that is being put together by Lamar Parks Board. Uh, that'll be running from December ninth today is when it kicked off through December twentieth. Um, next slide, please, the Keep Lamar Beautiful Christmas Decorating Contest, uh, which we wanna sign, everybody needs to sign up to be nominated by the eighteenth. Contest results will be announced December twenty first, and the information is at beautiful dot cityoflamar dot org for any nominations. Uh, also, Mayor, if I can, I just got this right now, it's not on the agenda for those residents that are living off of Newman Road. There will be a closure off of Lumen Road and we'll obviously work with, uh, Ms. Agada, uh, to get the information out. But there'll be a closure on Newman Road, uh, the feeder, that'll take place from the sixteenth to the eighteenth. We just got the ratio right now, but I'd be remiss if I didn't get a chance to get that out and we'll put some more formal communication out. Text that closure, and we've already alerted, uh, our fire, police, public works. And our communications team, they should be getting that out to a public, to the public out here, uh, very soon.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Well, the next item on the, the agenda is executive session. Where, where we, uh, are scheduled to, uh, continue to deliberate concerning our city manager, but there is one problem.
Just quick question for you to that, just to clarify, it, was this in your report, Mr. Garcia? The, the, the fiscal report?
No, those items are just red folder items, just for your, your draft, for your view. Uh, we were not able to finish that in time to put it on the agenda. Those are items that were requested by council for review, they're not, they're still in draft form.
We'll have those in, on the next agenda, Joe, yeah.
Thank you, I wanna make sure you got it in.
We'll officially request them to be put on, there's some, some numbers in that we need to share with you, yeah. As I was saying, this is the time that we have scheduled to, um, complete. Our evaluation of our city manager and to move to the next phase of that evaluation, but we have one huge problem. That problem is that there are only four of us. Uh, and the, uh, charter specifically stipulates that any vote on a city manager. Uh, should be done by a majority of the entire council. Uh, and one of us is missing. Um, we have tried to, uh, um, locate. Uh, Councilmember Lowry, who is in Washington, I believe, at a funeral. Uh, and he said to us earlier, uh, before he left, that he would be in a place that cell phone reception is tricky. We have been unable to locate him. Therefore, therefore, it would, uh, be against our charter to act on a city manager without him. Uh, as much of this has been billed, built up, uh, for a lot of us. Uh, unfortunately, it has to wait. Um. Personally, I believe that, um. We should not even go into executive session without Mr. Lowry. Um, I think the right thing to do is to, uh. Is to. Locate Mr. Lowry, uh, and then reconvene when the full council is able to meet. That's the right thing, that's the fair thing, and that's the, uh. The appropriate thing to do according to the charter. Um. So Gus, what do you advise outside of what I've just said?
If, if the council wants to wait to hear from Mr. Lowry, so that a full council a- and, and the. Can hear it and so that the whole city, so that the council can feel that the whole city is represented, um, I would advise that the council just. That. Kiara coordinate when y'all are next available and just, um, notice, provide the seventy-two hours. Notice under the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Very good.
The, the, that, the requirement is only if there's a, uh, um, a termination. We, we're still free to proceed, once again, uh, with a motion to just extend his contract for sixty days. And, uh, so that's my motion.
That is, that is a motion, uh, and it is on the floor.
Um, so, um. His current contract doesn't, it ends when y'all say it ends. If y'all want, I, so my question would be, is the motion to put a sixty day end on it or what?
That's, that's the motion to put a sixty day end.
So a- at the end of sixty?
To permit a transition, we do, let's do it right, but let's do it right with. Getting a proper interim in here and, uh, and doing it right, that's what, that's what a good business practice is. So it is, it's a sixty day with, uh, and I respect the majority of earlier, but a sixty day with the termination at the end of the sixty day. And that way, there's a, there's a transition here, it's done properly.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I see some concerns to my right on the faces of those, so we'll, we'll add them into the discussion.
I just wanna make sure that I'm documenting this correctly. Um, your motion is to extend a sixty day contract to terminate at the end of the sixty days?
Correct.
And then, and, and just, just so that we're understanding you, you correctly, and then we would move on from the city manager after sixty days? What you're saying?
It's a termination, that, that it would.
Yeah.
Um, this is the term, that sixty days of terminate.
Yeah, as I understand it, the, the motion is to terminate in sixty days.
But I have a, I, I, I have a point of contention with that, because if we can't terminate at all, then why are we even saying terminate?
No, you're, you have a.
Because, because everybody's not here to, to say terminate.
You're, you've corrected me, you're.
So I don't, I don't think we should even say terminate if it violates charter, let's not say permanent, terminate, and this is just a point of discussion. Council, Councilman La- uh, uh, Compey, um, why can't we just wait till everyone gets here?
Well, it's not gonna be this month because I'm not gonna be available, we're gonna say the thing.
Can we just wait to our next scheduled meeting?
To the next meeting.
Gotta be after the holidays, which seems.
Which I think is proper, get through the holidays.
Yeah. So. I wanna amend his motion, Mayor, can I amend it? You withdraw it?
Compey on withdrawals.
So my motion is to wait until, um, we can get all five here after the holidays at our next scheduled meeting.
So let, so I would, I would entertain a motion that, that would suggest. Us placing this item on the next regular meeting in January.
And let's pray that everyone's here.
Absolutely, I don't think we can put that in a motion. Separation of church and state, but. Are you okay with that, uh, uh? Well, there it is. You okay with that, Joe?
Yes.
Alright, we don't need a discussion on this, let's save some time, all those in favor of. Placing this on the first meeting in January's agenda, say aye, aye, any opposed? Well, you look at there, we're at item twelve. Requests and announcements. Let's start with Mr. Ross.
Outstanding. Uh, so. Last couple of weeks have been kinda crazy, so, uh, a lot of, lot of stuff. Not everybody's here to defend themselves, so some of it will wait until first meeting in July, but I can defend my. January, sorry, and I can defend myself, so. Second time I've read this, the Economic Development Corporation of the City of Lamar. To me, dear Mr. Ross, Lamar Economic Development Corporation Board Directors. Would like to thank you for the presentation you made this morning at the regularly scheduled board meeting, August twentieth of this year, by the way. Uh, the information was well received. Once your franchise agreement is active and your financing is in place, please submit copies of the pertinent information to the corporation. Once received, assistance is available and additional board action can be taken. Your passion for this business is evidence and your efforts thus far are commendable. Signed, Gene Smith. So, there was nothing except for, I was trying to rent a space and they were gonna help me with possibly putting in some. Uh, sound tiles in the roof, because you ever been in a building that has a metal roof, it's really, really loud. We're not talking about a lot, that's all we had talked about. So all this about the Economic Development Center funding me, not true, I was getting a loan. Period, that's it. Nobody in this city, not the mayor, not Ms. Yancy, not the E D C. Not anybody else was doing anything except me, I was fighting for this business, period. Second, I live at four one four Avenue D Lamar, Texas, seven seven five six eight. My girlfriend, yes, lives in Texas City and I do enjoy every now and then going out there and spending some quality adult time with my lady. That's it, that's all that's gotta be said about it. Lowry News Network saying that I live there, no, no. Tuesday night, yes, I go over there Tuesday night, Friday night, and maybe spend most of the day Saturday, that's it. That's done, period, you wanna come by Monday, come on down, Tuesday after five. Not a good idea, cuz I'm heading over there to have some dinner. And that's where I'm staying, so, that's all I have to say about that. Uh, the library on the fourteenth, please come see Santa. Fifteenth at, uh, the V F W, we're doing a Toys for Top Drive to help the Marine Corps. Uh, Marine League, so please come out, donate a toy, we greatly appreciate it, get a free barbecue sandwich. Thank you.
You done, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Nancy.
It's kinda nice to know that, that somebody else is being told they don't live where they live. None of us do, but no, this is a, this is an amazing time for the holiday and just, and, you know, this is. I, I, my birthday is on Christmas, so when I come back, I'll be a year older. Mayor, so I, I really want us to enjoy Christmas, enjoy each other. Uh, I do wanna put on the record though, Kiara, that, um, the, the constituents of District A. Uh, we do not support, neither do we, um, have we given. Another councilperson of District C the right to represent us. Uh, the slander, uh, the libelous talk that has happened, uh, from that particular councilperson. That does not represent the people of District A. And I wanted to put that on the record because that is so very important, we will not be a part of slanderous gossip and lies. Um, not the constituents of District A, and so I'm praying for our city because we are at a crossroads. At this time where we're gonna have to stand up for righteousness and justice and just the right thing, um, it's unfortunate. That at the same time, people try to say that they are trying to save taxpayer money, but then they're putting us in very precarious situations. And it will cost us money, so. Uh, I just wanna do what I was voted in to do, and that is to represent the good citizens. Of District A, provide a safe, happy town where people want to come and live here. So, uh, shame on those persons that are trying to destroy the city of Lamarck with vicious rhetoric, it's Christmas time. Let's focus on the beauty of who God is and our family and relationships, we have so much to be thankful for and grateful for. And the city, to our city manager, enjoy your Christmas with your family. And when twenty twenty-five comes, let's hit the road and get, get ready to hit the road, all of us to do some great things in our city and let's. Stay positive and let's see, and let's know why we're here, we're here. To represent our democracy and keep everyone safe and let's have fun while we're doing it. So with that, I say to my councilpersons, it's been a very interesting twenty twenty-four. And so, I'm looking forward to, uh, working with all of you and Godspeed, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy, Mayor Proten.
First, uh, wishing everybody, uh, Merry Christmas, a blessed Christmas. And of course, a Happy New Year, safe New Year. Uh, this, uh, experience in city is something that I should write three books about. And, uh, because they represent each one of the years, each year, service that I've had here has been, has been totally different. Uh, I think the, the biggest challenge that I have as I, uh, is, uh. I'm, I'm doing what a lot of other people have done, disconnecting from social media. I think the Galveston Daily News person has left, I no longer read the newspaper, I read books, I read books. I read, uh, uh, just finishing Mother Teresa's book on, on, on love and charity and compassion. And, uh, those are the things, uh, that important, at least for me, as you, as you, uh. As I look upon what I, what I do here, one of the biggest challenges, and I'll close with this. I try to be as impartial as I can and look at facts, look at facts. Uh, that's what I did in the previous position that I had, uh, which I had to deal with, with issues of. Of, of, of right and wrong, and, um, if you think that impartiality is easy, it is not. Impartiality is not a natural human emotion. Uh, we, we, we are products of immediate reactions. And the best thing that we can do for our community, I believe, at least I do, is always smile and always smile. Always willing to talk to anyone and listen, and I, I try to be as respectful to everyone as I can, period. Um, and, uh, and so with that, I say thank you for, for, for putting up with us. That's the more important thing, putting up and, uh, for your, for the joy that you bring to me each day, uh, when I see each one of you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. December fourteenth, that's Saturday, is that Saturday, is Saturday? Uh, Reefs, Reefs Across America, we hope to be able to, uh. Lay wreaths at the Lamar Cemetery as well as the Rising Star Cemetery. I, I'm excited about Santa, uh, coming. To the library. Hopefully, we can get James Ross to the library with Santa separately. But I'm excited about Santa coming to the library. Let me say this to you, to y'all very quickly, this is not an easy job, people. Uh, we, we have volunteered ourselves. And certainly, let me move, before I get to that, let me, let me, let me, let me share this with you, this is not an easy job and nothing we do here. Uh, goes without, uh, intense thought and debate. You hear me say a lot, uh. And you've heard me say a lot over the years, uh, when it comes to making tough decisions. Especially about members of staff. Uh, I tend not to pull punches. I tend to drive straight down the street, face to face, eye to eye, person to person. Uh, and, and I tend to share with you what my thoughts are, but, but. Certainly, those thoughts are a reflection of the words that are shared with me as mayor. But it only tells many times one side of the story. There is always two sides of the story. Uh, and tonight for me was not. Ever going to be about. Holding our city manager, uh, accountable with what he did not do, that was the other night. Uh, it's no secret that I've challenged Mr. Garcia, uh, for years now. In, in the capacity that I believe that he had an opportunity and still has an opportunity, uh, to achieve. But let me say this. He has accomplishments as well. Mr. Garcia has led us and helped us reach the All-America City Designation. Mr. Garcia has added to the grant totals, uh, that were already, um, awarded to this city. Through the work of previous councils and Mr. Tim Jackson. It's Mr. Garcia that, uh, many times is the first person here. Most times, it's the last person walking away from here, and even on weekends is away from his family. Uh, in the office, trying to do a better job. Make no mistake about it, he is a very serious man with a very bright future. Sometimes as councilpeople, we have to evaluate, we have to make decisions. Uh, and we have to do the best we can in what we understand to move our city forward. Nothing that was ever said, nothing that will ever be said, uh, uh, will ever take away the fact that. Uh, Mr. Garcia has been a bright star, uh, in our city and a breath of fresh air. As council, we have to do what's best, but it doesn't negate the things that you've been able to do. Uh, and the positions that you've been able to put our city in, um, and I am grateful for that. Uh, perhaps the rest of the council is grateful for that and the vast majority of. Perhaps the rest of the council is grateful for that, and the vast majority of the members of this great community are grateful for that. So I wanted you to know that, and I wanted to say that in an open meeting. I am a tough cookie when it comes to city managers. It was Mr. Jackson before you, and Chief Argon before that, and Mr. Gage before that, and all of them bore the brunt of this fanatical idea that Lamar deserves the best. And I won't apologize for that. Lamar deserves the best, and sometimes you can score an A. But I believe Lamar deserves an A plus. And so that's, that's how I've led over the years. And I won't apologize for it. But again, I will say, you have a tremendous amount of talent, Mr. Garcia. Never thought to ever take that away from you. And you're going to do well. You're going to do extremely well. And I'm proud of the time that we've spent here together, and I'm proud of the work that you've done for this city. Politics, most people don't understand it. They see us here having these serious debates with one another and with you, and we're giving you the business, and then we're but, but they don't understand that this is all part of the political process. But we are, we are very fond of each other. I, I love Miss Yancy. We, we get into it. I, I love Mr. Ross and, and Mr. Compean, and, and, and I respect Mr. Lowry. Quiet as kept, guys, I'll let you in on a little secret. When we are in the back, we all talk amongst each other, sometimes. Including Mr. Lowry. But politics is a strange, a strange, strange animal. And, and I just wanted to say that as, as much as I am tough and, and forward. I wanted to let people know that, that you are a good man. You really are a kind man. And, and, and you have done the job. We just needed a different direction, in my opinion. So, having said that, let me thank the council for our work. People don't realize that councils, through the course of years, we get hurt too. Councilpeople have feelings. Councilpeople have dreams and ambitions and goals. Councilpeople have families and jobs and businesses and retirements. Councilpeople have all sorts of things that we care about. We get worn down, we get beat up. And we have to stand in the face of that and try to do the right thing, knowing that every decision we make, fifty-one of the percent of the people may or may not like it, and the other forty-nine percent of the people may or may not like it. And so while we are getting applauded for one side, we are getting criticized by the other side. That's all part of politics, and so everything that you go through, Mr. Garcia, we go through. It's the nature of the business, but all in all, council, this has been one heck of a year. I pray that we rest over the holiday and become revitalized. And I pray that we move into twenty twenty-five with vigor, with intensity and with focus to do what we can to make the lives of the members of our community just a little bit better than they were in twenty twenty-four. Having said that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Garcia for our final remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind words. Thank you to council. Ultimately, to the residents and all the phone calls and texts and all the support. Really appreciate everybody. Obviously, those that are here, staff and everybody knows that I lead from the heart. Leadership and management are two totally separate things. My goal has been to make sure that there was a little bit of a hole when I got here. And I, I promise all of you guys that we would make sure that whenever my tenure would end, that the hole would be hopefully a little bit less deep. And hopefully, that's, that's where we've come to. More to be said at a later date when we take the next steps, but happy holidays, everybody. We appreciate everybody. Always yours in service. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just want to say happy birthday to my father. She turned seventy-five today.
Happy birthday, Mrs. Lois Jones. Mrs. Lois Jones. How, how old is she?
She's seventy-five.
I just had one last thing. I, I always wanted to also recognize my family. I mean, that you mentioned, my, my, my wife's been in Iraq, she's here tonight, my entire family. Lot of still feelings, you know, tied to that, because obviously, excuse me, it is a family decision.
Yeah.
So I want to thank her for being my rock and thank her for the constant motivation to keep being who I am.
Very good. Well said, well said, Mr. Garcia. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?